Officially opened the Brattleboro Planning Commission online meeting on April 8, 2020. Welcome, everyone. I'm gonna have to move over to my agenda. Now I can't see you. Okay, meeting called to order, announcements. Who? Anybody?
I have. I do have a couple of announcements, well, I have one and I want Andrew to make one. He might not know I'm giving it to him, but. The first thing I wanted to mention is that the US Census is out and active, and we really want to encourage everybody to complete the census. Right now, there's an easy option to go online. If you don't make that, you're probably going to be contacted by a census worker, and failing that, which we're hoping to avoid, is. People will, enumerators will come to your house. So, we just really want to encourage people to please respond to the census. It's always important, but maybe more so now than ever, because a lot of the federal funding that trickles down through the states are. Sorry, got distracted, I had to hit record.
This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry. The federal funds flow through the census, so our, having an accurate count is really important. So, please take the census, please encourage all your friends and family to do so as well. And then, Andrew, I'm hoping that you can talk about the NDA.
Quick question.
Yes, Josh?
The census, you said it's easy to find online, is that like Brattleboro specific or Vermont specific, or is it the same census? Link or website that everyone has to take?
It's, it's the federal census, so it's census.gov.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did, you should, I've gotten numerous letters with like a login number. They, they just come to resident at my address.
Yeah, I've done it, my household, Sarah and I have done it already, but I'm just thinking of like to link to, an easy link for people to get to.
Oh, I see.
And like share on social media, so that people can just click it and get there easy.
I will share something on Facebook.
Yeah, I can submit something together.
Yeah.
If it's simple, I can find it. No worries.
I'll still post something, though, it's a good idea.
I planned on doing a little, you know, I Brattleboro front porch forum, a little another, another push to get that information out there. So, we'll put it on the Facebook page and, and get it out in those places, too.
Anyone else have any other questions regarding the census before I move to the NDA? Jess?
Yeah, I was just wondering how you get that view, so you can see everyone?
At the top of your screen, there is like a view everyone. There's like a, there's two arrows, you kind of open up the view. If you want to do view everyone. Are you seeing it?
No, I'm doing it on my phone, so.
Oh, it might look different.
I'd like to see all of you.
All right, Andrew, why don't you talk about the NDA?
Right, so as do you, most of you know, actually from a few months back, myself and Sue presented that we're seeking to get neighborhood development area designation for a portion of Brattleboro. And two weeks ago, or I guess more than two weeks ago at this point, we had a, we met with the downtown board through the State Department of Commerce and City Development, it was an online meeting, conference call. We were gonna go in person, but obviously that didn't happen. So, it was a very quick meeting, but we got approval, so we got the NDA designation, which is really exciting. So, basically, at this point, now we're gonna, developers and people looking to develop the housing that meets some of the criteria that we presented about, you know, could get potentially waived active fees or reduction in fees, cap or fees, et cetera, the benefits that I mentioned before. And if you want more information, again, we could definitely send you that. But we're really excited, we think this is really gonna help further our housing efforts in Brattleboro. Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, great, congratulations, good.
Thank you.
Any other, any?
All the announcements are on that.
Okay, anybody else, any of the other commissioners have an announcement? Okie dokie. Kate and Jess, I can't see you, so you'll have to turn yourselves on if you wanna, or start talking.
I'm, I'm here, I'm just on the show me if I talk thing.
Okay, cool. Well, so, is there any public? Do we have a public? Is there?
I do not see any public on here. No, there is no public on this.
Okay, so, we cannot, or we're recognizing this is the opportunity for public comment, but having no public, we'll move on to item D, approval of the minutes of March 2, 2020, that were circulated, does everybody get a chance to look at them? Or you want to look at them right now? I need a, I need a motion to approve them.
A motion to approve the minutes from, what is the date again?
March 2, 2020.
March 2, 2020.
There a second? Yes, Tom is seconding. And, or Tom, are you making a comment? You're seconding. You're muted, I can't hear you.
Tom, we can't hear you.
Tom, I have to hear your volume.
This is Kate, I can second if Tom can't.
Okay. All right, good, second, so is there discussion? Great, no discussion, they look fine to me. Favor of approving the minutes from March 2, 2020. I guess we'll do a hand vote.
Kate, yes.
Prudence? Oh, you, you weren't there, so can you not vote? All right, anyway, minutes are approved, anybody abstaining or voting against? No, the minutes are approved.
Prudence abstaining.
Okay.
Prudence is abstaining, okay.
Minutes still pass. All right, section E or E, section 248 petitions, A, B. Do you want to make that away?
Sure. So, we have two, section 248 petitions that have come in. The planning commission gets notification of them and as well as the select board. There's a lot of static, are you guys hearing a lot of static? Jess, can you put your mic off? That might help better, thank you. Okay, so this, two, section 248 petitions are to the Public Utilities Commission, and the town has the opportunity to file a notice to intervene in these if we wanted to. The first one that came through is the petition of Green Mountain Power for a certificate of public good pursuant to 30 DSA, section 248, authorizing the rebuild of the North Brattleboro substation. You may recall, we looked at this in January, because part of the process for a major project is they have to give you an advance notice, so that's what you had originally seen. And we brought up a couple of concerns with them regarding lighting and landscaping and stormwater. Andrew and I met them out on site, they kind of explained what was going on there, and we were, and what some of their limitations were in meeting what our regulations say. First of all, regarding the lighting, their plan is to install a couple of 18-foot light poles with kind of emergency lighting, so it's not gonna be on all the time, it just might be if they have a, an emergency at night and they need to be working in the little yard. So, that would comply with our regulations. In regards to the stormwater, they are not increasing the impervious surface there, and so, under the state rules and under our local regulations, they are not required to make any improvements to the stormwater. Looking at the site, there is a lot of overland flow, so we were comfortable that it was not degrading the riverbanks or even the West River. It wouldn't flow towards the Connecticut because the rail line sits up higher. And then regarding landscaping, they have a bunch of mature, I haven't remem, do you remember, Andrew, what species it was along the fence line? But a bunch of bushes and shrubs that are pretty mature, I mean, they were leaf off at when we viewed it, and so, we would have been taking, if we pushed them putting in some street trees, it would have, first of all, they would have had to go smaller than what we wanted because of the utility lines. And so, in the end, we were really kind of feeling like the landscaping that they had provided some buffering, we weren't gonna get the street trees because of the utility lines that were already there, they would conflict. So, we were satisfied with the landscaping and kind of the limitations that they had there. And part of that site is town-owned, so improving landscaping over by the memorial, that is, that's town-owned land, so that's not their responsibility. Andrew, does that sound like inaccurate? Do you have anything you want to add?
Sorry, I was eating dinner, that's why I kept turning off my camera. I didn't want you to see me eating. I think that's pretty accurate. Regarding the stormwater, that buffer that goes to the West River, it's at least 100 feet or more. So, after seeing it in person, I feel a little bit more comfortable, like, well, obviously not much is gonna really change in terms of the runoff and that potential to hit the river, and by, hopefully by the time it gets there, it's already been mediated by the natural vegetation that's in the area. It's not a big site. The, the railroad in back also acts kind of as a buffer to the Connecticut River, slopes up, and then there's a railroad, and then obviously slopes down up in there. But, yeah, the, the other, the temporary substation is up, probably may have noticed it. And then, yeah, other than that, that's really it, so.
Yeah. So, I think the question for the commission right now is, are there any concerns that you have that we now want to bring to the select board and make a suggestion that they intervene in this case, or at least be a, be a party to the proceedings? I mean, we'll, we'll still get all the filings and that kind of thing, but if we have any concerns that we want them to address in the process, now would be the time to let the select board know.
Have a question.
Yep.
Were we able to, did we reach back out to the, a buddy neighbors? They came in, there were some of the public that came in a couple of months ago. Curious about where things were, was anyone, did, did anyone get in touch with them on, on the findings, especially with light?
We did not in the office, I'm not sure if Green Mountain Power had some more conversations with them. Do you have something to add, Andrew?
No, they knew about the fence, but I'm not sure if they know about the lighting.
I think that was one of their questions, they were really curious about the lighting. Uncomfortable moving forward, knowing that the lighting is only being used for emergencies or for fixing things at night, you know, that the, the lighting isn't on continually, I feel, is a, is a good thing for them.
You guys, Tom put something in the chat, his connection isn't strong enough to talk. So, can we make a provision that, that, that Tom can participate via chat? Because I, I think, except for that means that, that somebody needs to read it out loud, so it's recorded for BCTV, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that would be good.
At 6:14 PM, it's looking like my connection isn't strong enough to handle this, I'm delayed when I speak, maybe video too, and the mouse can, moves very slowly, but I can hear you all as well. And then at 6:17, he says, has GMP replied to our request for the project? So, do you want to respond to that, Sue?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that they have, they were, they met us out, I mean, we, we had hoped that they would look at some more ways to handle the stormwater, but our regulations don't require it, and neither does the state's stormwater regulations, so. Could they have done more? Maybe. Is there any jurisdiction to require them to do more? No. So. You know, I guess that's. That would be up for you to determine.
Tom says, okay, understood, it is what it is.
Yeah. Regarding Josh's point, we can definitely reach back out. The, these abutters, actually, they should also get notification, so we can make sure that they've got notification of this filing and, and go over the lighting with them. So that they know it's emergency lighting. And GMP had talked. Are there any other, do, do you want to take any action? Do you want to make any recommendations to the select board on this? Either, or we can just let them know that we reviewed it and. You know, we had some correspondence as well.
That seems fine. I agree.
This is Kate, I, I agree.
Okay, so, we got, we got thumbs up from everybody else.
So, just to, just to check in, the, what we're agreeing to is that we're not gonna like wholeheartedly support and endorse this exciting proposal, but we're gonna acknowledge that we had concerns and they addressed them? Or they, they gave us valid reasons why they couldn't address them, and so.
Yeah, I think, I think that what I'll do is I'll prepare a memo that goes to the town manager and the select board that just lets them know that the planning commission reviewed this, that we had seen the early notification, we spoke to Green Mountain Power, we had these concerns, and, you know, we talked about it with them, this is what they told us, you know, just kind of walk through that and just say at this time, we don't have any further concerns, or if that sounds okay to you.
I have one, one little question, which is, do we not have any concerns? Because there's no point in us having a concern, or we, do we really feel like it's all okay?
I'm satisfied, I'm satisfied with it right now.
I feel confident in being satisfied with it also. The biggest concerns the abutters had were, is a footprint gonna be larger? Are there gonna be different fences being put up? And what's the deal with the new lighting? And I think we've had all of those questions answered, so I feel that they're gonna be pretty content with what's happening over there. You know, I, I can definitely not speak for them, but, you know, what they were, what they were addressing, or what they were concerned about has definitely been addressed, unless I'm wrong, which I, you know.
No, no, you're, you're correct, I think it's addressed.
Okay, next one?
The next one is a de minimis application, which basically means it, it wouldn't even have a hearing if, if there's no notice to intervene or any interveners on it and who asked for a hearing, it would be administratively approved. So, this is a. It's, AT&amp;T has a site on South 4884 South Street, it's a private property. They have an, some antennas on a telecommunications tower there. There's actually four equipment cabinets, four different companies that have cabinets at the base of the tower. And AT&amp;T is looking to upgrade their antennas, and then some of the equip, some of the equipment in the pad, or in their equipment box there at the bottom. They're looking to go to LTE, which is long-term evolution technology, it's a 4G technology. Let's see, most of the equipment upgrades are gonna be on the inside, but then there's going to be antennas and some equipment on the tower as well. This property is not in the special flood hazard area or in a historic district. There's gonna be no increase to the height or the width of the tower. There will be, the surface area is going to increase a little bit because the antennas and then the equipment on the tower are going to be a bit bigger, so it, but it's not gonna increase more than 75 square feet, and there'll be minor impervious surface increases, which will be less than 300 square feet, so again, they wouldn't trigger any of our regulations. This is just equipment upgrades, it's an existing approved tower. This kind of thing happens all the time, and I would recommend no further action on this one either.
Doesn't sound very, no, it doesn't sound very impactful.
And this has, just for clarification, this has nothing to do with 5G technology, correct?
That's correct, LTE and 5G are different technologies, the best I can tell. So, is it fair to assume everybody, this is a, that this is a pretty straightforward upgrade, and we don't see a need to ask for a notice to intervene? I see yeses from Prudence, Josh, Felicity, Jess is shaking her head. Tom's still, Tom is, got a thumbs up, I think.
Yep, Tom thumbs up.
And Kate's thumbs up, so.
What is that?
Great.
All right. So, we're good on EF. Discussion of the role of, of planning and design in the pandemic. This is really a, we just, we put it in here because we were assuming that the planning commission would want to say, want to have, have, talk about this, since it's what's happening. But, but there's no agenda in it, other than if people want to have, you know, comments, ideas, thoughts. I, I can put up a copy of our charge, which is mostly, I mean, is all about planning, and there's nothing about disaster planning in our charge, so. If people want to be reminded of our charge in the context of this discussion, or, or if people just want to talk, this is, this is the opportunity.
How long is the charge, is it like a paragraph?
It's a, it's a series of bullet points, it's like 10 or 15 bullet points.
I don't think I need a reminder.
Okay.
It pretty much comes out of state statute what planning commissions can do.
So, what conversations are, are happening right now and what the planning commission can do?
None, I mean, we haven't, we, it, it, it. The only re, the only thing that I was thinking about personally is that, that in this particular pandemic, public space is really, really important, because it's the only, you need to have enough of it for people to be able to get out of their homes and exercise safely, keeping six feet, six to 10 feet between themselves and everybody else. And so, that strikes me as a planning issue, to be thinking that, that I don't, I certainly haven't thought about that before, I mean, one of the, one of the features of new city planning is the so-called pocket park. This particular pandemic makes the pocket park totally unsustainable, it's not, it's not, there, you can, only one person can be in a pocket park. So, that's, that's an example of what I'm thinking about.
That's a great point, Felicity, I was listening to a webinar today about when cities will be kind of, I guess, reevened, and how we forward, this pandemic is gonna really change cities and towns, just like every other pandemic has, you know, in history. Team, team, the Spanish Flu, really got the birth of sanitation systems. And coming out, and that's, that was a big urban planning kind of endeavor. So, I think that the big ones that they taught, yes.
It, you had, can you repeat what you said, you kind of went?
You're, you're really breaking up, I wonder if you. You're breaking up a lot, I don't know if you are for other people, I wonder if you turn off your camera, will, will he hear you better?
Can you hear me better?
Right now, we can.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try to say it again, I'll be, make sure I'm slow. I watched a webinar today on the reopening of cities after this pandemic, and one of the big things that really came out of it is that cities and towns are really gonna be transformed from this, just like in 1918 with the Spanish Flu, we saw the birth of sanitation systems. This one is really gonna be the re, it's gonna be the transformation of digital infrastructure. And another big one is open-faced public spaces. And how are we gonna reimagine public spaces, both big and small? And they didn't really dive too deep into what they would look like, I think that's really up to the locality, but it's something that we're gonna consider going forward, because the recovery stage is not gonna be quick, it's gonna be a long-term effort. So, I think that's something that, as a town, we can really focus on, and I was really even thinking about the downtown plan. If, if that will need any changes, but it's just something to think about.
Yeah.
I hope you could hear that.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew, that was better.
I had tech issues on this webinar, but I, I thought it was really interesting, and they have taped it, so we can send it out to everybody. But, this was Richard Florida, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Richard Florida, he came up with the creative class, which is, yeah. Which is about, his big, the big criticism is about gentrification. But anyway, I, so I, I went into it pretty skeptical, being Richard Florida, but this was put on by the International Council of Municipal Associations. And what he talked about was kind of how the cities and suburbs and rural areas are gonna be reshaped, and he pulled out a couple of factors that I think are relevant to this conversation. Some of the pulls to the suburbs and more rural areas will be the opportunity for remote work. People who are afraid to use mass transit. The desire to have private amenities like backyards and play areas. And so, you know, all this could lead to some gentrification. The push factors, like what. Again, my, it was a little, my connection to this conference was not very good, but he had push factors for cities and urban cores, where people might still be going into the cities because there's cluster of different industries and high-tech finance, media, entertainment. If we come out of this and there's air travel restrictions, people might want to live near hubs. He pointed out that walkable and bikeable areas will become more desirable, and that they also expect that there's gonna be a return to a lot more car commuting and single traffic trips, so. Anyway, I just thought those were some interesting things to be looking for and to think about when we're planning, coming out of, or planning into the future.
Wow. So, anybody else? Comments, thoughts?
I'd be, I'd be interested to see that, it sounded like you said you might be able to share the link to it, and we could watch it.
I, I think that I can, I mean, I had to register for it, but ICMA did tape it, and they sent out a link, so I will send it along to you all, and put it up on the webpage as well, in case the public is interested.
Looks like Tom has a.
Tom has a comment.
Yeah, Tom has a comment. Tom's comment, this may be entirely the purview of. This may be entirely the purview of building slash life safety codes, but what about changes that reduce chances of transmission? Like all public doors needing to be openable by foot, motion detecting, or at least handles that can be grabbed with arm rather than hand? That's such an interesting question. Anybody want to address that?
I think, um, he, I think it's, it's interesting, um, and kind of as we reopen, what, what Richard Florida was saying as we are reopening cities and, and people being in them and not just cities, towns, whatever, as we reopen after this pandemic. He talked about a couple of key dimensions that we would need to think about moving forward, which is health screenings and temperature checks, um, and personal protective equipment. Um, and so that kind of falls under the personalized protection equipment. Like how do we, sorry. When we're in these public facilities or pub, public spaces, how are we protecting ourselves? Is it gloves and parts? Is it, you know, those neat door foot openers and, and stuff like that? So it might not be something that we exactly deal with in planning because I do think it's more of a building code, but I think it's an interesting observation.
So vis a vis that, Sue, what's the timeframe now for the downtown plan? And is there going to be any kind of opportunity for us to modify it given, um, or to ask Brandy to modify it given this?
Um, so we need to be, we need to finish up by the end of May. Um, and so I think budget-wise, we're not really in a position where we can ask her to modify it. Um, just because most of the budget is spent, um, in, in finalizing the plan. Um, but if we want, I think, I think we can ask for an extension to the grant, but it doesn't change the budget aspects of it. Um, so I guess the first step would be to get it, get it into our hands so we can kind of be evaluating it.
Um, Jess had a comment. Jess, do you want me to read your comment? Okay. Who is it that develops and manages emergency preparedness plans? Is that an internal town staff?
Yeah, that's, uh, primarily the fire chief has that up.
The WRC has a disaster planner, right?
They have an emergency planner who assists towns with that, but it's usually the local, um, it's the local people that write the plans.
Okay.
And they do a lot of hazard mitigation as well, not necessarily pandemic, but they, in the past, they have done pandemic.
So back, if, if it's okay, can I go back to the downtown master plan conversation? Given that you're a planner, Sue.
Yeah, Jessica does.
Did you have another question, Jess? Oh, where does the economic development planning sit?
Um, the town does a lot of work with BDCC on the economic development planning at this point.
Is that good, Jess? You want more? Okay. Um, so can, can we, even if we don't have Brandy writing the plan anymore, is, is it going to be, can we change it? Or does whatever she gives us, we have to take when she gives us the final thing? Or can we modify it ourselves, given the fact that, that we have two planners on staff? Like if we wanted to modify it, uh, in order to incorporate some thinking about COVID?
Yeah, we, we could. And if we want to begin thinking of a preface or, or something, yeah. I mean, I want to be careful about agreeing to modifying it, knowing that she hired a lot of landscape architects and, and other professionals that have skills that we don't have. Um, but, you know, we can certainly do text edits and, and that kind of thing. And we could prepare some stuff to give to her to insert it into the presentation.
Sorry, I was muted. I said, okay, that's great. Um, all right, anybody, does anybody else have any comments? All right. What? Thought I heard something.
That was me. I was just saying that, that makes sense. I, I was going to ask about, isn't there a public comment for this, uh, that we'll have to think about how to do that?
We did have public comment in the beginning of this. Are, are you talking about for the downtown plan, Kate?
The downtown plan. Sorry, I'm, I'm jumping a little bit.
I'm going to turn my mic off. Bernie Sanders is on.
There will be, um, a public presentation. Well, our plan all along has been to have a public presentation of the plan and discussion of it. So, yes. What that looks like, because how we're able to meet, I'm not really sure. I mean, you know, this is an interesting experiment, but as everybody can see, there are some limitations to holding meetings like this.
Sue, and I thought if we were going to do a presentation, uh, um, it was during this time where we can't have a physical meeting or a place to meet, we could do something maybe similar to like a webinar where we would just present. So it's a little bit more streamlined in terms of the process. So, you know, there's all this video screens, but then there's the chat option. Um, and potentially maybe people can, we can send something out beforehand. So people can send in comments as well that we can address. Um, that's just a thought.
Cause are we talking about like?
Those are good thoughts. Well.
Sorry, don't want to interrupt you, Sue.
No, no, go ahead.
Um, cause are we, are we talking about like, uh, changing the plan now to meet COVID-19? Uh, no, Felicity's shaking.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I was just thinking about, because it's, because of the, the particular focus of the plan is public space.
Yeah.
And we haven't, we didn't really think about spatial, like criteria, you know? Public, public space was public space, you know, three months ago. And now all of a sudden viable public space has to be a certain size in order to be able to have the public in it safely.
Yep. So you're just trying to think of how to utilize something that we have already to be beneficial somehow?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just sort of thinking about the fact that we, we went into this process of having this downtown master plan and now we're, it, we're about to have it. And, and it, there may be parts of it that are no longer useful or as useful as they've ever been.
Yeah, parts, if not a majority of it.
Well, at least we had bicycle, we, you know, we had the bicycle stuff, but even that we may, I mean, if there are going to be more and more people riding, I mean, who knows? Um, cause there's all, all that stuff about truck traffic and cars and parking, all those things that are now going to be different. If there are more, more cars, fewer people. I mean, I don't know how we're going to incorporate more cars here because I think everybody can afford a car, has a car in Vermont. But anyway, um, all right, Kate has a big, uh, Kate, you want me to read your thing? I guess so. Uh, that would limit people so. Kate, I like Andrew's suggestion on the public webinar with the presenter and people can enter questions. That sounds like a good way to get the public eyes on the presentation without being in person. Jessica says, me too. Maybe a recording could be shared on the town website. Kate responds, that would limit people without computers. So maybe we can find a way to solicit responses ahead from them and read them.
I think, I think we can work out creative ways, um, even getting it up on BCTV. Um, they're taping this meeting, so that could be a way, and then we can get the comments back. I know Andrew's been sitting in with a couple of planners on these kind of discussions, so, um, we'll definitely be able to do something like that. Um, and, and to the downtown master plan, I mean, I guess I would say that to think about some of the themes, we do talk about widening the sidewalks. Um, so I think that's a good thing in the, where you need more space. Um, we know our sidewalks are tight. Um, I think, you know, people are still, if, if you look around, I mean, it may not necessarily be safe because they're crowded, but the public trails are still actively used because people need to get outside. And, and while yes, there might be more cars, maybe that's not something we see as much in Brattleboro. I think that, you know, people are still going to want to bike and walk. Um, it's just, we might see people moving to this area because they're tired of the super dense areas and they, they want to come here and, um, still have kind of this downtown core that we have, but be able to do it by biking or walking. So I don't think that we'd be totally abandoning, um, any, actually anything in the plan.
No, but I mean, it's, yeah, it's, I mean, it stresses the notion, we want people to move here, but we don't want a whole bunch of people to be building in the rural areas. We want them to be staying in our towns.
Intensity is another kind of really big question, um, that think about. I, I was reading an article and they talked about, um, the, the whole idea of what kind of density are we talking about? There's the rich kind of density, as they're calling or more affluent people, where maybe some more affluent people live, where they can, they, they can work remotely. They don't have to leave their apartment. They can get things delivered. But then you think about like the more poor density, like in the, uh, global south, where it's a lot, it's a bigger issue. There isn't sanitation like there is in other complexes. And it's like, well, how do we address outbreaks in those settings? Um, I hope that was really interesting.
Especially to, our poorest communities are the ones getting hit the hardest right now also.
Yeah, I wonder if there's, where, where in the planning, where it does, um, planning for hospital population sit? I know that there are some Vermonters have been concerned around the influx of second homers, um, given that our hospitals are by and large for the local people. And, I mean, is, do, do, how, how does that, how does that fit into planning?
That's not anything. I've known local or regional planners. I mean, I think it's pretty much been the hospitals and the Green Mountain Care Board. Um, I know back in the, like, 2008, um, even a little bit earlier, there was a lot of long-term care planning that came out of the state. Um, but again, not necessarily done at the local level.
And hospitals, you know, got very, they got very small grants for emergency, uh, preparedness from the health department. Um, I'm sure that that will change now with this experience, but.
Call from Bernie Sanders.
Sorry. All I got. He's inviting you to a, to a town meeting.
I thought Bernie was going to jump on us.
I thought Bernie was just calling me, darn it.
No, he called me first. Um, all right, are we going, are we, are we good? It's eight for, it's eight, it's 18:45, it's 6:45. Do we, are we good with this conversation? We want to move on to next item?
I'm good to move on.
Just, just one quick thing for me again regarding housing. Um, there could actually be, potentially to be, um, opportunities, more opportunities in affordable housing in terms of funds, because of where, um, the, the market is going to be leaning in terms of, um, like, you know, there's going to be some type of housing and other types of commercial development that aren't going to be ideal anymore. Um, so we could actually see more opportunities in housing, um, which is a good thing. But also like, what does that housing look like? Just a thought.
Okay. Um, well, Dorothy.
I would thought also, can we add this, uh, same discussion to the next month's agenda? Um, cause I'm sure that we'll have more to talk about again in a month from now.
Yeah, absolutely. We should probably have it as a running agenda item. And I, I'm really interested in seeing their webinar, if that's possible. That'll, that will help me think about it.
Yeah. I will send around that link, um, maybe as we speak.
Tom says agreed. Uh, okay. How are you, Kathy?
I'm okay. I'm late, sorry.
Yeah, no worries.
Like, you know, I had a hard enough time with my own schedule now. It's like the children on Zoom meetings and, you know. I, I remember it at 5:30, but by like 5:40, I forgot, so.
I understand. It's all right, Kathy. I'm in the same spot.
Um, so we, you, we're, we are now at item G, uh, planning values discussion based on the design for the Just City Lab. Um, so this is going to be kind of unwieldy. So please, I'm, I'm asking your indulgence as we, before we start. Um, you all got the, I, I assume you all got the PowerPoint that I sent you with the sort of basic instructions? And I, um, so I thought we could do the first two parts, which the first part, this one, the where I'm from, um, piece. Um, I, I think I said you could do, we could do it while we're, while we're talking, but I don't know necessarily if it's really going to work if we do it while we're talking. Um, but the idea is that, that this point, I mean, it's my understanding of this is to get you to understand the relationship between the values and an actual planning process, the planning decisions that you make, because, because sometimes the values are sort of abstract. Um, so in thinking about specifically your own place, where you're from, where you grew up or where you live currently in Brattleboro, um, does, do we want to go through this with the idea that thinking about the relationship between the values that are present and the values that are absent as you see your own neighborhood or look back on your own neighborhood? And that way we'll get, I hope, a, a better understanding of the actual practical planning aspects of the values. And the, the values list is seriously unwieldy. And I wrote to the, the Just City Lab and they oddly didn't write back to me, um, to see whether or not they could give me a list of the values. But, but, um, they, they didn't write back. So it's that great big poster. I can share the screen and then, and then you can see them. Do you want to do that while you're thinking? Or did anybody get an opportunity to do their little sketch before the meeting? No, shaking hands. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to pull this thingy up and show you the list of values, I hope. So the, the way to, um, Sue, can you make me, how do you, can you make me capable of sharing my screen? Why do I have that? So, yes, share. So the, I divided the poster up into two slides so that I could see it better. Um, so the, these are the big ones. Acceptance, aspiration, choice, democracy, engagement, fairness, identity, mobility, power, resilience, rights, wealth, welfare. And then these are the, these are the definitions for each one. So acceptance is belonging, empathy, inclusion, reconciliation, respect, tolerance, trust. Aspiration is creative innovation, delight, happiness, hope, inspiration. Democracy or choice is diversity and spontaneity. Democracy is conflict, debate, protest, voice. Engagement is community, cooperation, participation, togetherness. Fairness is equality, equity, merit, transparency. Identity is authenticity, beauty, character, pride, spirituality, vitality. Um, uh, mobility is access and connectivity. Power, no, power, power. Accountability, agency, empowerment and representation. Resilience is adaptability, durability, sustainability. Rights is freedom. Rights is freedom, knowledge, and ownership. And welfare is healthiness, prosperity, protection, safety, security. So as you're thinking about your own spot, I think, I guess the only way we're going to do this is everybody just sort of takes a minute and thinks about their own spot. And I will leave the, I will leave the small slides up there with the, their definitions. So that, can everybody now see the whole thing?
Is it possible to expand it a little bit more, Felicity?
Yeah. It'd be great to see the bottom, the main, the main words again. I can only see the last few letters of each word.
Let's see, there it is. I'm gonna put them at the top and see if I can put these at the bottom. So I'm sorry, I don't have a big enough screen.
And are we doing this from the perspective of Brattleboro or?
I don't think it actually matters, because I think within this, in step two, we're going to do it from the perspective of Brattleboro. But the point here is for you to get a sense of how, how the values operate in terms of, in terms of what you know to be the case of, of aspects of planning. And so that, so that when we move to the, our discussion about housing and density, we have a sense of what a value like transparency would mean vis a vis planning.
So like, I'm, we're supposed to like choose one word? Is that the situation right now?
Yeah, one word that equals a value that is roughly defined as they've defined it here.
So for instance, like, the, the one that stands out to me is resiliency, adaptability, durability, and sustainability, especially these days in this COVID-19 world, you know, like especially with adaptability and then sustainability, that's like what really pops out to me at least.
Yeah, I think, I think at this point, we're, Josh, we're doing, we're, we're looking back as a next, the next step is to look forward. So if you can think of a place, I mean, in, in your own accounting of your neighborhood, are those values present?
Not yet.
Yeah, so that, I think that's the idea is that I'm, I'm, when I'm looking at my little neighborhood, I think, um, there was, yeah, there were a lot of things there, but I would say none of the, the sustainability values were there, except for maybe durability.
So we're, we're looking at this retrospectively, like historically.
Yeah, you were looking, you're looking from, from your own experience. And again, I think this is really just, I mean, this is why we don't have to take as much time as they sort of suggest, because this is really to get the juices flowing and thinking about the application of the values to a planning effort, a specific planning effort.
Tom had a question. Are we choosing from the bottom big values or the, or the many in the columns?
We're choosing from the, from the ones in the columns that are really the, they're subsets of the big ones. So I, I mean, if you choose the big ones, then you basically get all the little ones. I have to turn the light on.
This is really tough. It's really hard for me to think about the past right now with the future being so uncertain.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's true. It's, it's, it's a difficult exercise, but this is exactly the, the time, because so much is going to change, to be thinking about what is really, really, really important and something, and, and things that are, that you think are going to endure.
How is my mic doing this time?
Not bad. I can hear you very clearly.
Hey, great. No static?
No static.
Great. I was curious what the green big word in the middle is, because I can't see it.
This one?
Yeah.
So I wonder if I can type, no, I can't type on this. Maybe I can, hold on.
You, um, can I, can I start talking, answering?
Yes, go right ahead.
So looking, so starting with looking backwards. Oh, look, you can write on it. So cool. I think that for me, the town that I grew up, the place I grew up in, was very much oriented around that big central Green One identity. And I think that it had its own sense of who it was, and I think that there were definitely community members that got left out of the value because they were different. But these were values that were really important in the community that I, that I grew up in. It was a conservative town in southern Maine.
Anybody else?
I almost agree fully with Jess on that pertaining to Brattleboro though. You know, like out of all the columns, out of all the, out of all of our choices that they've given us, I feel like those are probably, you know, the most closely related, I would say.
What have I typed so far?
Identity, mobility, power.
I'm gonna go, millions. So basically, these are, so from left to right, this is acceptance, oh, sorry, acceptance, aspiration, choice, democracy, engagement, fairness, identity, mobility, power, resilience. Okay, so there they are.
I can throw in a couple. I grew up in a, I grew up in a suburban town outside of Hartford, Connecticut, maybe around 60,000, maybe a bit smaller than that, I'm not actually sure of the population. I think in my little world, world, there was some of the values that I saw reflected were knowledge, access, and then I think about voice, because I had a very big high school and there were lots of different people in the high school and a lot of different opportunities. So it just seemed like students had a lot of voice. But I think some of the missing, you guys had both, both pointed out, identity. I felt like there was no authentic place in my big suburban town with strip malls and mall malls and, and all the other stuff. And there wasn't really respect amongst the various groups of people, and I think representation was missing.
I can't see the chat box, so if Tom types in, will somebody read it?
Yeah, he hasn't entered anything yet. I just checked. I, this is Kate. I can speak to the town where I grew up in was, in southern Connecticut, was extremely wealthy, a suburb of New York City. So for me, the big ones would be identity, mobility, and power were most prevalent where I grew up, but most of the, it was predominantly.
I'm trying to do all of them, but I can't.
Hang on, hon. It was predominantly populated by, you know, single father earning the money on Wall Street and mom home with the kids kind of place with a lot of new McMansions in rows where I grew up. So yeah, identity, mobility, and power. And it, it was, I never felt like I fit in because I was a very odd child. So it was identity, like, you know, along one very narrow track, which is one of the things I embraced about being very different about Brattleboro is there's a lot more acceptance of different sorts of identities here.
Yeah, Kate, I, I agree. I also grew up in a town out, the suburb of New York, well, actually more New Haven, Connecticut, but same thing. Identity, safety, power, mobility were present, but it was a very white community, so diversity was missing, and I would also say equity compared to where I lived in Seattle before I moved to Connecticut, where I live, the neighborhood area that had a little more diversity and, you know, ninety-eight percent of the kids weren't white. It was more, I think, like a 70, 30 or something like that. But still, the contrast, you could definitely see, and, you know, if someone being at me, it was more that very conservative, we are who we are kind of vibes.
I can talk about the town I grew up in, which was an industrial town about 18,000 in western Pennsylvania, outside of Pittsburgh. And like what others have said, I think identity was a big focus, safety, security. It was prosperous. There, most people, most people's fathers worked at two, you know, steel mill and Pullman Standard, and so people had stability, you know. And I think my perception of poverty was pretty much when, when there wasn't a man in the house and it was the mother by herself raising children. Those seemed like the folks that were poorest. But anyway, that's just a kid's perspective. There was no diversity whatsoever. There was really, I think, an active attempt to try to keep African Americans from moving from Pittsburgh into our county. And I think that I'm guess, well, I don't know if there, if there was a real entrenched power structure, there, there could have been. I, I was really happy to get out of there when I was 18 and didn't move back, but. Kathy, have you said yours?
No, I really struggle with this because I, I think partly my, I don't know, my brain just doesn't think like this. And I'm also, you know, I, I, it was hard to see, so I actually downloaded it from the website. And I feel like if you, if you look at the big word, some of them might apply, but not all the things that are the little words that are with them apply. So slicing and dicing a little bit. I mean, I would say, so I grew up in Point Pleasant, New Jersey, a beach town in New Jersey, and there was definitely an identity aspect. But I honestly feel like, you know, I left when I was 17 and I don't actually have any awareness of what the town was like, you know? I mean, it was white, it was somewhat working class, I think it felt safe. Uh, I don't know how I would characterize it, you know? In a lot of these, like descriptions, I kind of feel like I really just don't have any idea, you know? Little diversity, probably not tolerant. I don't know. I feel like I can parse this out in the smaller words, the smaller things, as opposed to how they've lumped them together, and the big ones easier.
Yeah, I think the smaller words are actually more helpful, plus they have the definitions, although the definitions also, like, I, I would describe my neighborhood as under togetherness. But then when I look at the small print, it says a sense of solidarity within and across populations. And I think, I mean, my, my small town of Amherst, Massachusetts was not diverse at all. So there was not, it's a sense of solidarity and then period, no within and across populations. So any, so do we want to, are we, are, I mean, we've got a, we've got a good sense of these things now. Do we want to move to the, oh, wait, Tom's, Tom, 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 yes, Tom. I can't see the chat, so.
This is, this is Kate, I can read it.
Okay, great.
So from Tom, for the suburban, middle-class town where I grew up, it seems that there was a valuing of aspiration, mobility, and identity. But like Prudence said, that's my kid's perspective. My memory is of strong valuing of career and conformity and materialism. Sounds, sounds similar to what, yeah, what Prudence and Andrew and myself said, interestingly.
Very, very interesting. I'm sorry that we're not, that we can't, I mean, I'm writing some of them down, but, but I guess we're going to record this. So what about the ones that we're missing, Tom? Did you say?
Tom said, give him some time to write it, please.
I find it so interesting that so many of us are reflecting that we came from a community that was very, what was the word that he used? Conforming or white or suburban or middle, like feeling middle-class, feeling like, and that we all ended up in Brattleboro. And I wonder, I wonder if there is a difference that we saw in Brattleboro that drew us here, or if there is some sort of aspiration that we all sort of may have around what we think Brattleboro is and means?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. Well, I think we'll get to that next.
Tom said what was lacking was acceptance, democracy, and engagement.
Okay, so turning to the next one. Now, this is going to get really hard, because, oh, no, it's not going to get really hard. It'll be fine. I'm gonna, so the next one is, you all take, there's the charge of the planning commission. For your enjoyment, that's a, a view of the city of Florence, taken from Jado's company, Oh, it's down there, sorry. Okay, so the next step is to figure out what we as the planning commission think are the key, and we're supposed to come down, we're supposed to get 10 values that we want to use as we address the zoning changes in the denser neighborhoods, as we talked about two meetings ago, I believe, when we were talking about zoning. So here they all are, and you guys will just call out and I can type in, just like I did with the other one, or I can circle the ones and then we'll see, then we'll have a conversation to see if we can get it down to 10.
And this is what we're aspiring to have?
Yeah, these are the values that we think we want to be utilizing as we do our work on zoning.
And this is current, this isn't where we grew up?
No, this is current. This is Brattleboro. This is our work in Brattleboro.
I apologize for my confusion. I didn't, I'm not really understanding this exercise, but I think I'm following along a little bit, a little bit better now.
Okay. Okay, good.
I'll vote for belonging.
All right, you're gonna have to tell me where it is.
Oh, it's up here. Oh, it's above acceptance. First one, above acceptance. I love that little pen.
Yeah, isn't that cool?
I'd like to put out, um, ownership.
Tom said he likes vitality.
Where, oh, there's vitality.
I like inspiration. Yeah, top right.
Yeah, got it.
So this is for the, the dense, densely developed neighborhoods. It will be possible with our new designation, is that true?
Yep.
I, I would say connectivity, then.
Connectivity.
Can I change mine? Does that any raise?
You can add one.
Yeah, you can add one.
Right, because diversity on the right-ish.
On the right. There it is, yeah, under choice. So we have one? Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just gonna say Kate said also diversity and equality.
So we're gonna put two marks around diversity. And can somebody point out where equality is?
Yeah, right, man. Where is equality?
I'd vote for equity.
Equity.
Above equality.
I, I want to include something under resilience, but I'm not sure which one is the right one.
Does anybody want to help out with that? I'm going to turn off my mic because the phone is ringing.
I would say sustainability or adaptability.
Yeah, of, of the ones under resilience, I vote for first state, sustainability. That's, we've talked about that a lot in planning, and I think that's a pretty important value to folks in Brattleboro.
Do we have to choose one of those, or could we just choose resilience?
I don't know, I don't make the rules.
Well, for my, for my vote, I think sustainability is, is what I would want to go with. Both for the sustainability coordinator and the fact that the word can mean lots of different things.
Yeah, I think the next step of this is going to have to be that we're going to actually have to define. Once we, once we've narrowed down our list, we then have to define what we mean by it, because.
Tom also said happiness.
I think it's fascinating that we, we have not chosen anything under democracy or engagement. And they seem to be really important in our process with the downtown plan.
I, I agree. I was struggling with which one under engagement to pick.
How about cooperation?
How about togetherness? I mean, I feel like cooperation is like, like, there's more love and togetherness. Like, togetherness implies cooperation? Maybe.
Okay, erase cooperation. I go with togetherness, I like that.
Yeah, I, actually, I agree with what Kathy said. I think you can be together, but you don't have to agree on things. Like, part of togetherness is accepting disagreement, so I like that.
Okay, that's, that gives us eleven. The, I mean, if we, um, the question is, how many of these can we, do we actually think we can get? Or do we want them all? Can the person who picked ownership explain?
That was Jess.
Well, why did you pick ownership?
Um, I think not only literal ownership, creating opportunities to have homes that are owned by people, but also owning the process, owning the changes. And I guess that, that is sort of part of the engagement piece as well. To me, if, if people can say, I agree to that, or I put my name on that, or I voted for that, or I, they will own the change. But I also think that it's important to allow for owners' self-direction in this, in this new zoning and owner's choice. I think that was a big part of what we were talking about, opening up the, the change in restrictions.
Right, yeah. So maybe it's helpful for people to actually explain what they meant. And then, and then we'll have it recorded so that when we, because ideally, what we'll do is we'll type these up. And so when we sit down, we'll have these in front of us when we sit down to look at the zoning changes. But it will be helpful to have the descriptors next to them so that we don't have to remind ourselves what we meant when we put it down. Is that okay, Sue, if we do it that way? And then, this is all being recorded, so we'll, we can type it up. So does somebody want to describe, define belonging?
Wow, I suggested that one. I think it's like sense of place and feeling comfortable and safe and included.
Okay, cool. Inspiration?
Just one more thought on belonging. I wonder if, if there's something in there about allowing, allowing for people to make it, I guess that's ownership as well, but make it their own or make it designed or shaped or laid out so that they feel like they are allowed to express themselves and be themselves and are accepted for that within this, whatever structure it is. Belonging.
Huh. Okay.
I, I chose inspiration and I sort of really want to erase that one now. Because I also went along, I went ahead and chose diversity too. I'm not sure if I'm the first person to choose diversity or not. But for me, what that means is a healthy community is a diverse community and not just, you know, race, you know, that it's also class. It's also like a diverse business community. Diversity for me is like such a big, all-encompassing word, and it's really, really important for a really healthy community, for a healthy town. So that's why I'm way more excited about the word diversity than inspiration. So I don't know, I don't know if we're trying to dwindle the list down, but if we're, if we are inspiration, can definitely go.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we, I mean, the, the Just City, they suggest, they suggest ten because I guess ten is sort of workable in planning purposes. But it, but, I mean, if, if you want to jettison that it was your choice, we can, we can get rid of it. Who chose, oh, Tom chose happiness. It's on the chat, somebody want to read it?
I can. I chose vitality.
Oh, okay. Tom wrote, I chose vitality because it brings to my mind an image of the neighborhood development promoting community vitality, vibrancy, liveliness, for happiness, simply that the built environment should aim to promote nurture people's enjoyment of life. Great. Connectivity.
I was thinking kind of literally, just that, you know, we, we want to make sure that that new development is, has good connection, you know, sidewalks, streets, whatever, good sidewalks for sure. But anyway, good connection to the, to the rest of the town. I took it literally.
Yeah, I mean, can I add to your definition, Prudence? And just, and just say that it, it might also be that we, we want to, we want people to be connected virtually as well? I mean, like, we want, we want all of the future planning to include all sorts of electronic capacity for every community. I mean, that would certainly benefit us a great deal if everybody had high-speed internet right now.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I, I wonder if I could just add that we know in Brattleboro that there's a lot of single households. And so connectivity can be more than just the physical or infrastructure, but it can also be the human connection. Do you need to put an accessory dwelling unit or another unit on? Are you going to have this little co-created community because you're looking for those connections as you age? Or you're at different life cycles? Maybe that's going too far, but just throw that out there for your consideration.
Yeah, that's good. Equity and equality?
Equality was me, this is Kate. I picked equality because if, you know, if, if any of my fellow citizens of Brattleboro aren't free or being treated equally, then I'm not really either. You know, I, I think that, that everybody has to be for everyone to really be free and really be a full, full citizen of the town and be able to have all, you know, the advantages they deserve.
And similarly, equity, I think, is the conditions, the existence of conditions that permit, you know, full participation and opportunity for everyone.
And we got a definition of togetherness, right? Because Kathy defined that. I want to, I can, I haven't added one, can I add one? I, I mean, I feel like I have to do something under, 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 something having to do with aesthetic. So I would put creative innovation. Just because it seems to me that we have to, that we have to be thinking about the built environment, at least as contributing to our aesthetic pleasure. And for me, at least, that can be construed under the notion of creative innovation. So I guess I would, I would say that in, in the design of built space. So it's not just buildings, but also space. So I'm going to circle that. Oops, made myself a paw. So I'm, I'm cognizant of the time, Kate, because I know you need to go. And it's, we got four minutes before, it's seven thirty. Are we feeling pretty good about this? We do want to keep going, or are we ready to call it a night?
Well, I'm interested in what the next steps would be after this.
Well, the next steps after this is, is that we actually approach, we, we look at the zoning and we actually try to do some work and see whether or not in the decisions that we make and the regulations that we write, if we can have these, all of these exist within it so that we actually plan for diversity, creative innovation, happiness, belonging, ownership, sustainability, connectivity, vitality, equity, equality and togetherness.
Is there, is there either some sort of rubric that we can then apply to the work that we're doing? Or are there recommendations to, specifically in zoning work, to apply certain values to the, to the work of zoning or rezoning?
I'm sure there are. The, this, I mean, this exercise, there's a next step of this exercise, but I didn't think we were going to have time to do it. So I didn't read up on it. And the, and there seems to be a fault in the PDF that they have because one of them is the exact same as the other, is the one we've just done. But the, but the worksheet is different, so it's confusing as to how you're actually supposed to do it. But that, this, the, the three-step processes reflect, align and then actually generate. So I actually start to do the planning where you, where you figure out how to make planning decisions that would, that would bring about these values. And I believe that's what you're supposed to do in step three. But again, I haven't heard back from the, from the Just City lab. I can email them again, or I can call them and say, you know, we would like some assistance in moving to step three, but we wouldn't be able to do that tonight. You're all quiet.
It's the, the silence of consent, I think.
Was there?
So does that mean we're, we're, the next step, I mean, I, I think we can, we could probably do step three in advance, I mean, right, right before we get into the zoning discussion. It may be, I mean, it's going to be hard, I would imagine it's going to be hard because, because we applying values to actual zoning decisions should be challenging. But it seems like we ought to do it within the context of having the zoning material in front of us as opposed to speculating on how we might do it. Okay. People can see your screen, I want to unscreen, how do I, how do I unshare my screen?
I guess one of the things I'm thinking is that there's all these things that we didn't circle. And it makes me feel a little nervous to actually try to have the conversation. Like, to a certain extent, this is an experiment. And, you know, I would want to, I don't want to apply the experiment to one small piece of the overall zoning work, right? So I, I think if you're comprehensively going over our zoning and then we chose to actually work through this fully, that would be one thing. It seems almost unfair to me to take this as kind of an experiment and then apply it to this one aspect of our zoning conversation when it hasn't been applied to anything else. And it's also like, there's other words in here that, you know, I'm sort of thinking, well, are we leaving that out? Or are we, you know what I mean, like, I don't know, access or? So I, I'm just voicing my slight bit of maybe confusion and/or discomfort with like putting the lens over this one piece of our work without. discomfort with like putting the lens over this one piece of our work without it having been applied all along, or understanding how we might apply it in the future, you know?
I agree with that too, but, go ahead, Sue.
Well, what I wanted to say is, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, I think zoning is kind of this weird beast to begin with, but what I think that this provides Andrew and I's guidance in, okay, you've picked out these words, and when we're doing our work and we're making choices, we're gonna be able to defend it, the work that we present to you, and that ultimately you might end up suggesting on the select board in these terms, that these are the values that we were looking at when we were looking at these denser housing districts, I mean, if we were doing this out in a rural part of town, there might be some different words. I don't know, I mean, I, I feel comfortable with enough, with it enough, and, you know, moving forward and kind of the things that you would be looking for us to come up with in, in the zoning, if that makes sense to you, but.
Um, when, when, when we, when we first talked about this, it was because I went to this show in New York City that had all of these different, or not, there were four different projects, planning projects, intercity planning projects that had been done by four different design labs using this system, and, and I think I mentioned that on the Just City Lab site, there, there are videos that show, they show the whole process, so they show the, the values that they chose, that the planning group chose to apply to that particular situation, and then they go through and show how each decision underpins the value. And I think if you, if you watch those videos, you'll understand how you, I think when we originally started talking about this, we were talking about sort of large-scale values that we would always apply, but I think as I read more about it, I thought, well, it's true, the different situation requires different values, and it's not to say that the things that are not circled are jettisoned, so obviously, access is, I mean, we're legally bound to have accessibility, so there's, there are some things that are always gonna be there, but we might, in, in a particular neighborhood, we might choose one thing to, to stress over another, and then there, presumably, there are gonna be some of these that were, that we are always gonna circle. And, and I also think this is, if we're, we have to start somewhere, so we're starting with this, and, and we can change it or undo it as we go along.
Just to add to that, Felicity, I agree, like, as a planner, like, when I'm problem-solving or coming up with something that involves, that's something that's affecting people, I'm always gonna have like a social justice lens, just because those are my personal values as a planner, and I want to make sure they're applied, so when you're talking about things that may be missing, like access, or what's, whatever else, I, I'm just looking at these values and saying, well, how can that be also included in something like diversity or belonging, because I'm already gonna be thinking about that, especially when we're talking about certain areas, like the more dense areas near downtown.
So does that, does that make you feel better, Kathy, or, and Josh, or no?
Yes, what you, the three of you have just said definitely makes me feel a lot better. When you first approached us with this, you know, it seemed, it was like a, it's still a really good idea, but it, last month or a couple months ago, when you first brought it to us, I was way more excited about it, I'm less excited about it, because it'd be awesome to be able to participate with you guys doing this all in the same room, you know, instead of like awkward social distancing, you know, through, from our personal houses, you know, over, over our computers, like, I think I would understand it a little bit more, I would understand what's going on a little bit more, if we could do this normally, like, as a group in a room together, so I'm, I'm wondering if we want to hold off on this until things normalize. I don't want to crush or squash, you know, the work that you've done already at all, though, and what Andrew and Sue are saying about using this as a tool to help them navigate, to help them with their jobs, I think that's fantastic, if that's what we're doing here, then we should just keep pressing forward and keep doing it, so I feel, I feel good about it.
I, yeah, I agree with you on the notion that it's, I mean, it's obviously designed as a physical exercise, where you get up, you walk around, you have small conversations as you're putting your post-it notes on each thing, and, and without that, it's clearly a much, it, it's not as much fun, and, and it also doesn't, it doesn't generate the ideas that it clearly would spontaneously when we would all be in the same room together.
Exactly, I also saw this as a tool to get to know each one of you better too, you know, so that's part of my, that's part of my excitement for it back then, right now, though, like, my, my mind is just so focused on the future and COVID-19 and protecting this community and helping businesses, that this sort of practice right now, to me, like, I don't want to sound offensive or mean, but I feel like this isn't like the best use of our time right now, you know, six months from now, this could be fantastic, but again, I don't want to crush the work that we've done so far, especially the, what you've done, you know, to get us this, this far into this.
Okay, so where should, what should we do now? Call it a day?
Keep, keep moving forward.
Okay, I mean, this is, we're, we're sort of, we've sort of wrapped up what it is that we wanted to do today, and I don't know if Kate is still here or Kate has left.
I'm still here, Kate's here.
Okay, um, so we'll, I mean, we'll, we'll meet next month, same, same deal, and we'll have these typed up, and we can either continue to move forward with them, or we can postpone depending upon the situation that we find ourselves in a month from now.
Will we go back to the first Monday of the month, timing?
Yes, now that we, now that we've got the open meeting law set up, and we've got VCTV set up, yes, we'll go back to our regular meeting time. Is that okay for you, Prudence? No, no answer.
Prudence, you're on mute.
Yes, that works.
Okay, great. Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
This is Kate, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, raise your hands. Is everybody's hand raised? I only see three people, I'm gonna assume when the motion passes, we are adjourned.
Yep.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all, take care.
Thank you, thanks everybody.
Thanks, guys, bye-bye.